Welcome everyone to the town of Greer and Apne, regular session of council for the 27th day of May 2025. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll, we'll start with our opening proceedings, which is our national anthem. I'd ask anybody in the, the body of the council chambers to stand and, and face the flag. And I appreciate that and we'll get going. Thank you, everyone. Moving through our agenda now, we'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Moved by Council Norrie, seconded by Councilor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Opposed, the motion's carried. Is there any disclosure, pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none. Deputations, deputations, scheduled new items. Madam Clerk, I don't believe we have any of those. Deputations items on the agenda, and I do believe we have one, Mr. Bella Savage. I know Tony, you've been here before, so we'll give you the Reader's Digest version again, just in case you don't remember, but welcome. The microphone's in front of you. You have to push the button on the right hand side to talk and you have to hold the button down. And once you're done talking, you can let the button up and quite obviously, if you don't hold the button down, the folks at home call and they get really angry because they can't hear what's going on. So welcome again and, and whenever you're ready, the floor will be yours.
Thank you. I'd like to thank council for the opportunity to be here before you this evening. I'm here this, I'm here this evening to express my concerns regarding the proposed procurement bylaw amendment outlined in the procurement bylaw review update. In essence, this bylaw amendment proposes to give council a veto over decision outcomes derived from the current procurement process. The problem with this proposal is that these decisions are tied to the specific process that is being used. Because the town is currently using the lowest compliant bid, meeting all requirements model, it will not likely provide the best value for money outcome the town appears to be seeking. This, if this amendment is approved, council will likely be asked to overturn the majority of the town's initial procurement decisions going forward. More importantly, these vetos will be carried out after the competitions have been completed under a completely different set of criteria. This will create a host of potential liabilities as it opens the door for abuse and positions the town for legal challenges. Government procurement processes cannot be all about value, as a poorly worded by law would have you believe. The processes are designed to provide consistency as they attempt to balance the needs of values for the taxpayers, accountability, protections for the town and simplicity of use. There are a number of different procurement models available, each of which has its own advantages and disadvantages. The two most common are best value for money and lowest compliant bid, meeting all requirements. The best value for money model is generally considered more beneficial when value is the overriding priority and the resources are available. However, this process holds a number of potential challenges associated with its implementation. These include subjective interpretations, lack of clear metrics for long-term values and the potential for delays or increased costs when incorporating non-price factors into the overall assessment. In general, this process requires a larger, better trained and more knowledgeable staff for its implementation. That being said, many public officials tend to prefer this methods because they perceive, probably rightly, they can get a better or the best outcome by using it. The lowest compliant bid, meeting all requirements, is the most widely used model in the procurement process. This model prioritizes a fair and transparent competition, ensuring that the best value is obtained for the lowest price. More importantly, it restricts interference in the process, provides a clear set of established criteria to guide both staff and bidders as they move through the competition. The biggest downfall with this process, according to some, is that it is designed to give the user what they need, not necessarily what they want. The primary difference between the two models is that one process focuses on best value for money, while the other is focused on best value for the lowest price. I point this out because understanding these two models and how they work is key to put in context or the staff report into context. The staff report proposes to continue using the best value for the lowest price model currently employed by the town, while giving council a veto authority based on criteria used in the best value for money process. In attempting to base future veto decisions on best value for money, the report does not appear to recognize the fact that it is actually introducing two models designed to achieve very different outcomes into the town's decision-making process. This is an important point to note because giving yourselves the ability to change the decision outcome from best value for the lowest price to best value for the money should also require a change in the town's overall procurement process, something the report does not acknowledge. If the town says it wants best value for money, then there is a process to do that. These different processes and their decision outcomes are not designed to be interchangeable. So using the best value for the lowest price model to make recommendations for the best value for money outcomes creates a disconnect between the process and decision. More importantly for the town, there is no supporting evidence in the available data to justify the change in the decision to best value for money, only an opinion. If you review the recent flooring procurement briefing, you will see we likely got the very best product in the competition. But no evidence was actually provided to council to show taxpayers actually got best value for the money being hyped during the presentation. In summary, this proposal is seeking to bring together two incompatible parts of two separate procurement processes that are not designed to work together. For that reason alone, council should proceed with caution, if not reject the proposal outright. That being said, if council actually believes that the best value for money model is a better fit for the town, it should consider directing staff to explore that option. There are issues with the current procurement process that need to be addressed. Adding this proposed amendment into the bylaw will not help council make better or faster decisions and will likely create more confusion than there is now. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Tony. Just hang tight. We'll see if council has any questions with respect to your deputation. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Bella Savage with respect to his presentation? Seeing none. Thanks, Tony. Obviously, we're going to speak to this later on the agenda and you're more than welcome to stick around. I think it's, it's fairly early in the agenda, but you're more than welcome to stick around if you wish, so.
Just say I want to get, I'm starting to get a complex because this is the second time I've been in front of this council and no questions have been asked.
Yeah, sometimes, sometimes you're just hitting it on the right nights maybe because sometimes we ask a lot of questions and sometimes we don't. So, but I appreciate you coming tonight, Tony, and we'll look for a motion to note and receive the present deputation of Mr. Bella Savage. Moved by Deputy Mayor Culver, seconded by Councilor Martin. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Oh, sorry, I had a question before we call for the vote. Go ahead, Councilor Hicks.
Sorry. Thank you. Through your worship, Jessica, do you have a copy of what Tony read from?
Through your worship, I do not, but I can request it.
Yes, please. It would be better asked for from you rather than me. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Hicks. Is there anything else before we call for the vote? All in favor of the motion that's on the floor? Opposed, motion's carried. Next matter up, correspondence items on the agenda, and I don't believe we have any. Unfinished business, I don't believe we have any. And the next is our administrative consent agenda and just bear with us as we move through this. It's fairly lengthy, but there's a lot of good information in here, so. First matter up is the, sorry, the council minutes for the regular session of council, May 13th, 2025. Is there anything in those minutes anyone would have any questions of? Seeing none. Committee minutes for the municipal heritage committee. Is there anything in the minutes of the commission, the municipal heritage committee on the 15th of May that anyone would like to ask? And I know, Councilor Martin, I know that's your committee. Is there anything in that you would like to highlight or does the report speak for itself?
No, Madam Clerk has got the minutes down to a tee here, so I don't need to add anything to the report. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Martin. Yes, she's very good at that, isn't she? So. Next matter up is the correspondence for information. Is there anything in that correspondence anyone would like to, to speak to? Seeing none. Council inquiry, we do, we did have a council inquiry with respect to e-billing. I believe that might have been Councilor Norrie. And I see that there is a response there, Councilor Norrie. Is there anything you'd like to speak to that or staff would like, would they like to comment on that?
No, I can now tell the people that have been calling me an answer at least, whether I agree with it or not. I'm looking forward to getting the e-billing though, so thank you for the response and look forward to it happening eventually.
Great. Thanks, Councilor Norrie. Delegated authority memos, town hall abatement and the arena floor scrubber. Is there anything in those two delegated authority memos that anyone would like to question or ask? I know Mr. Brown is here this evening. I think they're pretty straightforward, so thanks. Q1 financial update 2025. Is there anything in that financial update that anyone would like to speak to or ask any questions about? Seeing none. Growth and infrastructure, health and safety, water stream, funding application. Is there anything in that report that anyone would like to speak to? And I know Mr. Noges can speak to that if we do have any questions. Seeing none, and just, just for council's awareness that at our last county council meeting, we did authorize this, so that funding stream or application will be going forward. So hopefully with a little bit of luck, we'll, we'll hear some positive results from that, so. Activity report, executive services, 20, May 2025. Is there anything in that activity report anyone would like to comment or speak to? Seeing none. Activity report, fire department, April and May of 2025. Is there anything in that fire department report anyone would like to, to speak to or ask any questions? Seeing none. I'm just going to briefly, maybe the chief can highlight this, but since we've moved over to the tiered response agreement and we've adjusted that, and of course with the dispatching changes that have happened within the fire department, I think we've seen some very positive results there. Chief, did, did you wish to, to expand on that?
Thank you, your worship. I would like to expand on that. We've noticed that calls have dropped somewhere between 42 and 50%, and I think it's down even 14% below the previous month going so far this, this year. We hope this is a continuing trend. Things are stabilizing out in terms of a normalized call volume. And we are being still called by Atlantic City Paramedic Service for the most urgent and emergent calls. But I do believe we're being more effective with this new agreement, so I thank council for the support on that.
Great. Thanks, chief. That is some really good news and we're all glad to hear that, so. Is there, Councilor Pedal?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Chief, while you're here, just have a question. I'm reading here about the, the training. It's here. I know that you don't have it in front of you, but it just goes on, talks about subjects covered was 11 and total hours 14 and a half. But just looking at the average attendance of 11.33, in, in your, in your mind, is this well attended for the type of training that's being offered?
Yes, we've, we've had a change in training philosophy where we're, we're doing, it is being more well attended through your worship. We're also increasing opportunities for training for both the paid-on call and the full-time firefighters to train together. We've implemented a Saturday morning training and also a Wednesday morning training where all members are encouraged to come in and join in on the training sessions and be remunerated for that. So we're seeing a little more spread out of the training and we've had great attendance at the last few. Most recently was our Sergeant Scott Woodburn for traffic safety as we had a couple of close calls in the past year. So we wanted to reiterate the importance of having good watch people and ready to assist and make sure traffic control is managed in concert with the police. We've also been invited to share in training just as latest today on fire investigations with the OFM junket that's here for the whole week, training on clandestine drug labs and investigation. So I do believe training is well attended and members are interested and engaged in the training.
Great, thank you. That's very refreshing to hear. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Pedal. Thank you, chief. Is there anything else? Seeing none. Next matter, financial and IT services activity report. Is there anything in that activity report anyone has any questions or comments about? Seeing none. Activity report, growth and infrastructure, May 2007, 2025. Is there anything in that report that anyone has any questions or comments about? Seeing none. I'll just comment briefly. Thank you, Michael. I always enjoy reading that report. It just shows the, the growth and the advancement that that's happening in this municipality and all those fruits are coming to bear now, so thank you for the hard work on that. Parks, recreation and culture activity report. Is there anything in that report anyone had any comments or questions about? Seeing none. And the access E11 report, April of 2025. Is there anything in that E11 access E11 report that anyone has any? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Culver.
Actually, it just wasn't quick enough to get my hand up there. It was actually back to the Parks and Recreation. I see the mobile vendor applications. We've got Mr. Jerry's and Kona Ice and Bath Burgers. If they're on private property, do they, do they need to have a permit?
Through your worship, so no, they're not required to have a permit if they're on private property. Oh, Jessica has something that.
Sorry, through your worship, if they're on private property, they're required to have a license through the town, which confirms that they are, do have their sign off by public health, fire, planning, et cetera, but they don't have a lease agreement because they're not on town property. So if they're on town property, there's two pieces to it, and if they're on private property, there's just the one. So if they're on town property, there's two pieces to it, and if they're on private property, there's just the one.
Okay, thank you. I just, because I know where there's a lot of questions here, but all that's great. Thank you. Thanks, Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there anything else? If not, and is there anything else in the E11 report anyone has any questions? Go ahead, Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just had a couple of questions on, because I'm on the Waste Division Committee, I thought it might be helpful for us when we get discussing it at committee level. The bag tags, 29, garbage collection, 27, recycling, 24, those three items. I just wonder if I could have some clarification. What are the issues with the bag tags? Is it, they didn't get them, or?
Through your worship, my understanding of how E11 is tracking this, it's predominantly, at this point, delayed service, a delayed pickup of either recycling or garbage.
So that's under the bag tag?
I'll defer to Nathan on the bag tag specific issue.
I'm also going to ask you about the garbage and recycling. I assume that's what you were answering.
Through your worship to Counselor Martin, yeah, so that would be related to people, whoops, sorry, to people not receiving their bag tags. I'm contacting the town whether they received them after the fact or did not. So it's just a case being open. We look into it and then close that out after the fact.
Thank you, Nathan.
Thank, yep.
Michael, getting back to you, the garbage and recycling, is that complaints based on garbage being late picked up or garbage not picked up at all, or?
Through your worship, it's a combination of the two. So if it's a matter of delayed pickup, those are conveyed on to waste management or cycling back to pick that garbage up if it was missed. Or it would be a matter of staff looking into ensuring when the garbage or recycling was put into the curb to see if it was in line with the timelines stipulated in the waste collection bylaw. So it's hard to break out every single item, but it's made up of those two larger buckets, if you will, of around delayed service and missed pickup.
Thank you, Mr. Nobes. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Bill. Is there anything else? If not, we do have a recommendation that council consent to the approval of the following routine items. That the minutes of the regular session of council dated May 13, 2025 be adopted as presented. That the draft Municipal Heritage Committee minutes of May 15, 2025 be received for information. That correspondence for information items dated May 27, 2025 be received. That council receive for information, the council inquiry follow-up e-billing report. That council receive for information, the memorandums of delegated authority and the procurement policy bylaw. That council receive for information, financial and IT services, Q1 financial update 2025 report. That council receive for information, the growth of and infrastructure, health and safety, water stream funding application report. And further, that council direct staff to submit a joint application with the County Lennox and Anton for the reconstruction of Center Street and portions of Isabella Street under the Municipal Housing Infrastructure Program, health and safety, water stream. Moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motion is carried. Next matter up, items for consideration, procurement bylaw review update. And Ms. Hamel, I believe you're going to speak to that, so whenever you get settled in, the floor will be yours.
Thank you, your worship. So as a follow-up to our last council meeting, staff were directed to bring back a report to council with an update on the procurement bylaw review. We're happy to share that we have filled the position of the procurement and grants coordinator position. Was filled by Troy Ginchard, who you have all had the pleasure of meeting this evening. So we're looking forward to getting started on a number of the priorities that staff and council have outlined for this position, including the recommendations that were outlined by KPMG. Those priorities are listed in the staff report for your review. In addition to those, we also, as a result of the last council meeting, we presented a recommendation to council to award a tender that was not the lowest bid. And reviewing the language of the current bylaw, we noted that there was no discretion available to council, particularly around non-low bid. So we feel that it's important at this point in time to provide that discretion option to council so that we can prioritize, again, obtaining the best value for the town as referred to in the bylaw itself, which is the best combination of price, technical merit, and quality that may not be the lowest price. And we're recommending this at this time as a temporary measure, as we, of course, are committed to coming back to council with a full review of this bylaw, which will include a number of recommendations and changes to language that undoubtedly will include changes to language around discretion and lowest compliant bid and best value for money. But we wanted council to have the ability to have that discretion available to them as we continue through the procurements of the remainder of the year. The language that we're looking to add are, as followed in the bylaw itself or the amendment to the bylaw in the agenda, and they state that notwithstanding the provisions of this bylaw, "The town shall have absolute discretion in awarding contracts and retains the right to reject any or all bids." I'll just want to note that this language is consistent language that's already included in our tender documents that are issued. So we're just trying to add some consistency there. And the second language that we're looking to add is that council may by resolution waive any requirements under this bylaw while council deems in its sole discretion that decision provides the best value to the town and is keeping with the spirit and intent of this bylaw. I'm happy to take any questions that council may have on this matter. And again, we just want to council to have the ability to have discretion with current procurement.
Great. Thanks, Ellen and Counselor Penel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Ellen, that's notwithstanding provisions, bylaw, the town has absolute discretion awarding contracts. That, the way I read that, is that the town, you, are going to take away any decision-making from council? Is that how that's intended to be wrote?
Through your worship, no, that is intended to give the discretion to council. So nothing else in our process will change. We will still score. We will still provide council with that scoring. We will still highlight what the lowest bid is. All it does is give council the option without waiving specifics within the bylaw to award to the lowest tender, or the non-lowest tender, sorry.
Okay. I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Penel. Is there anything else? Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, worship. Hi, Ellen. Thanks for the report. When do we anticipate that the full bylaw review is going to? I know you're working on things now that we have Troy in the House, so to speak. But when do we anticipate that a full review will come back to council?
Thank you, Counselor Hicks. So as referenced in the report, we have committed to this before the end of the year. I do expect that we'll have it before then. We are working on, you know, developing the framework of how we want to approach the priorities that this position has, which there are a number of competing priorities, but this is certainly at the top of the list. So I expect it will be before then, but at the absolute latest, we'll see it tied off before the end of the year.
Great. Thanks, Counselor Hicks. Is there anything else? Seeing none. Thanks, Ellen. And I mean, the obvious answer, a question that I would have, is that ultimately, whether we change or add this addition to the bylaw at this point, we do have the ultimate decision-making on this process anyways, as we've always already seen anyways, so. And this is a temporary measure in order to get us through to making a bigger, better, stronger procedural bylaw, so. Counselor Penel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I just thought of a question following what Counselor Hicks was saying. If the full bylaw review is going to be a later part in this year, and I see that later on in this agenda, we have a bylaw to speak about this staff report. Once we pass that bylaw, these recommendations will be implemented immediately? Is that correct?
Through your worship, I'll seek to the clerk if there's clarifying additions that can be made to that. But generally, yes, once the amendment to the bylaw is passed, we will add that language, or I don't know if you just attach the amendment to the bylaw that would add those additional two phrases. Clarify that for me, please.
So through your worship, if that bylaw is passed by council tonight, we would put a consolidated version of the bylaw on the website, which includes those additional clauses that have been added. It would go into effect immediately. But again, this language is common to see in procurement bylaws, but not necessarily common to use. We wouldn't expect that as soon as council passes this bylaw, now every single procurement staff are recommending not going with the low bid. It's just there to have it as a, in case it is needed provision.
Thanks, Counselor Penel. Thank you, Ellen, and thank you, Jessica. Is there anything else? Go ahead, Counselor Schenk.
We purchased floor scrubber tonight. It was $5,000 savings. Went to the cheapest one, went to about the best quality. So what we're doing here, from what Chris had said to us in his previous, over the flooring and everything else, that there was problems with certain, you want to compare apples with apples, but it's very hard when it did the flooring. So his recommendation, I totally agreed with. So to make this the option, it's not too often that the municipality doesn't go with the lowest bid, but you want to have something that lasts longer than a certain, because it's been 20 some odd years and with the coloring and everything else, and the poor, the other mats were being a lot more porous, therefore for the cleanliness was harder and everything else. So I totally agree with what Mr. Brown had said in his presentation beforehand with the flooring. So yes, I agree with this amendment, and Troy will review all this also. So it would land on his shoulders, whether it's good or not. There we go.
Thanks, Counselor Schenk. Is there anything else? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation that council receive for information, the financial and IT services report, procurement bylaw review update report, and further that council adopt a bylaw amendment to provide council discretion within the town's purchasing bylaw, as included on this agenda. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Schenk. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, motion is carried. Next matter, financial and IT services, transition of utilities billing software. And I think Nathan's going to speak to that.
So through your worship, what staff is proposing here is a transition from our current utilities billing software, which is CIS Infinity, to Vatom, which is a Central Square product, which is what we currently use for taxes and other miscellaneous transactions in our financial system. And it's our main financial system, so it houses our GL function and everything imports to that. The main driver behind this is the CIS Infinity that we currently use is extremely outdated. It hasn't been updated in years and years, and we're actually reaching a point now where support services becoming hard to come by and realistically doesn't exist, aside from we're lucky to have some legacy staff who've been dealing with it for a number of years. So that's kind of where we've reached the breaking point on this, is we know it's not if, it's when it breaks essentially, and we're going to run out of support. So we did reach out to the company to see if an upgrade option was available. It's embedded in the staff report and the financial implications. The cost of that was astronomical, quite honestly. It would essentially be the cost of what we could go out and do a full ERP with at this point, or something towards that magnitude. So unfortunately, it's not really a viable option financially for us. So we're trying to transition to something, and rather than trying to go to another product that would have to integrate, we know the option is there for us to use a current product that we have. So it hopefully make the process, or it should make the process much easier, not only for the staff in the billing module, but mainly for those who work taking transactions. As of right now, they have to operate and use three separate systems at the front counter when they're taking payments. We would still maintain a separate system for recreation-related invoices, but this is uncommon for municipalities. A lot of them use Perfect Mind or Booking, which is what we have. So we're looking to move towards that. I do want to note, too, there is two pieces to this. There is the billing software itself, as well as the reader. The reader that we have right now is also extremely outdated, and the supplier who provided that for us, and I believe this has come up at council before, they basically found it on the back of a shelf somewhere, and it was kind of the last of its type. We have to use that reader to work with CIS currently under its current version. Even if we upgrade CIS, we have to get a new reader because none of the softwares that currently use utilities billing could operate with that meter-reading system. So regardless of whether we were to update CIS, switch to Vatom, or go to a different product, we would also incur that cost. That is laid out in this report, but I just want to be clear on that. Because, like I said, it's not an if, it's when we lose support on the current version of CIS, even if we were to maintain it. But if we move to a different software, that cost is going to be incurred regardless, and it would be an upgrade in service on a number of levels when it comes to meter readings. As is mentioned, there's a live dashboard and so on. So I'm happy to take any questions on this, but that's kind of some brief points on.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there any question or comments for Nathan? Go ahead, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Nathan, I'm a numbers guy. I like numbers. There's a lot of them in this report. So could you maybe help me out by letting me know how much money you want from us tonight on both the billing and the reader, please?
Through your worship, yes. The reader, so the upgrade to Neptune 360, that's $12,500. And then the Vatom integration would be $20,000. So that's 32,500 for the two of them. As is mentioned, we're proposing to use the funds from the 2024 budget that we had allocated for this. It took a number of months for us to even get a concrete quote from CIS. So we're proposing to use that $15,000 carry forward from 2024. So it leaves $17,500 to be funded elsewhere that we don't have in budgeted funds right now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just through you, a follow-up. What was the third-party billing then, please?
Sorry, can you repeat that?
I'm just wondering, was there, I saw in here somewhere there was a third-party billing on here. Am I reading the right report? Maybe not. It's okay. You answered my question, which was great, because I'm happy with that answer. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Counselor Penel. Is there anything else? Counselor Schenk.
Nathan, don't get me wrong here. So you have, I'm trying to get this through my head. So in 2024, the monies weren't spent. Were those monies put back into a reserve? Or were they just left in as a line item and not spent? Because all I'm saying is that, okay, we've been at this, you've known this problem, and you've been working through this problem. So now it's come fruition, so I just don't want to spend money that's already been put into reserves, but we're going to use some money out of the reserves that's over it. But in 2024, was the money that was not spent for this line item, was that money put into reserves? Or was that just still carried forward?
Through your worship, to Counselor Schenk. So we haven't closed off our books yet for 2024, technically. So we haven't placed it in reserve yet. That's why we were looking for a resolution of council to do so, to make sure that that is placed in there specifically. Otherwise, as we went through the year-end process, we would, depending on where it lied in terms of operating capital overall, it may automatically end up getting transferred to reserve, but this ensures that we are transferring it in and then back out for 2025.
Just don't want to spend the same money twice. That's all, you know what I mean? So, okay.
And through your worship, sorry, I was just able to find what Counselor Penel was referring to there.
Sorry, Mary. It was, I was just looking at the boss also, if I was on the right track, so I was going, yes, and she was going, okay, yep, all right. So that's good.
Sorry. Through your worship, to Counselor Penel. There is the, now I found what you're referring to, third-party. So we could go out for an RFQ to look for an additional integration, essentially. So we could look for other providers rather than going, switching to Vatom, which we currently use. Same thing could apply. I don't have fully costed options for that. I would expect it would cost more because we're bringing in, like, integrating to another third-party, so that's more work involved for them as well. But that is an option that's there. I will say, Central Square has kind of cornered the market in terms of municipal ERPs. There is other options out there, for sure, but they own a number of the products. So if you ever hear of Great Plains, or Vatom, obviously, or Diamond, they continue to seem to buy up a number of the other software suppliers, and have kind of taken them under their product environment. So they are options, but it could also be that we're going to another Central Square product if we were to go for RFQ.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Nathan, thanks. Dave, go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, your worship. Nathan and Ellen, so by moving everything to Vatom, which just, it makes sense to me on that basic level. But does this also make the auditing process easier as well? Like, are you, so for utilities? Like, are you, so for utilities, like both for for ourselves, for internal audits and year end, but also for our external auditors, does this help if they're only dealing with one system or we're only dealing with one system for consistency?
Thank you, Councilor Hicks. I think the overall impact would be minimal. It does more internally on the internal side for reporting and and integration into one system. We're not having to do daily transfers of data over. From an external audit standpoint, they still have to review the information once it's on there, so it's not really going to make a difference on that side, I don't suspect.
So once we have everything in Vatom, assuming that we go with staff recommendation tonight, what is the proposed length of time before Vatom has to be upgraded to the next version of software? And this, I think, is an important question because if it's in two years, well, now you've you've managed to get it all into or most of it into one except for recreation. And then.
Through your worship to Councilor Hicks. So as I just mentioned, Central Square has been buying up all of these other products and they're looking to consolidate them. However, it looks like at this point in time that Vatom is the one they are consolidating too. So they have they have mentioned that it's end of useful life for Great Plains, which is a huge player, do their integration with Microsoft programs. So it sounds like that one is actually going to be the first to go and Vatom is going to be extended. That's that's the indication we got. We had a number of staff go to the Central Square Conference in in September last year. And that was kind of the chatter at that point in time, and that's the indication that's been given in the municipal treasurer's group. Because a number of municipalities are looking to go elsewhere. So at this point in time, it looks like we've we've kind of found some luck in that sense. So I don't foresee us having to change. There's there's constant hot fixes and updates that go on as part of our our current software package as well. So it's always updating in the background on a frequent basis. But as in terms of like a major upgrade, nothing on the horizon that we're aware of.
That is very good news indeed. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Hicks. Is there anything else? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation that council receive for information, financial and IT services report procurement by law review update report. And further that council adopt a, sorry, I'm going to go back to the one that we should be dealing with. Finance and IT services transition of utilities billing software that council receive for information. Financial IT services transition of utilities billing software report and further that council direct staff to carry forward $15,000 from the 2024 utilities capital budget for software upgrades to 2025. And further that council direct staff to fund any outstanding amounts through utilities reserves. And further that council direct staff to begin implementation of Vatom Utilities Billing and Neptune 360. Moved by Councilor Hicks, seconded by Councilor Shank. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion? Opposed, the motion's carried. Next matter, financial and IT services, 2024, 2025 CCTV grant program. And I see Ellen's coming up, so the floor will be yours when you get settled in there, Ellen.
Thank you, your worship. So this report on the CCTV grant program is an update for council. As part of the 2025 budget, we included $120,000 to support this program, 50% of which we applied for funding. Unfortunately, we were not successful in that grant application, so we did not receive that $60,000 that we had initially included as part of the overall budget. When council decided to include this in the 2025, the resolution at the time read that if we were unsuccessful in the funding, that the $60,000 that was contributed from the tax base would be transferred back to reserves. That is still an option for council. We just wanted to present an alternative option to council if they so choose to take our recommendation to reduce the scope of this project and bring down the number of cameras that we would be expanding in the CCTV program. It's to fit within our $60,000 contribution. So that would include the purchase of an additional eight stationary cameras and one mobile camera. Sorry, my apologies. I believe that that report may be incorrect and it's it's eight. No, that's right. Eight stationary, one mobile. Down from the the initial project scoops, project scope included four additional stationary stationary carriers, cameras, and two additional mobile cameras. We're just looking for council's support to carry forward with a reduced scope of this project within the $60,000 that was allocated from the 2025 capital budget.
Great, thanks, Ellen. Is there any questions or comments with respect to Ellen's presentation of the report that's in front of us? Deputy Mayor Calvert.
Thank you, through your worship. We probably discussed this before, but the portable camera, the camera that we're talking about, who would have control over where it goes? Is that something we would have the control or would the OPP have control?
Through your worship, no, that is something that we control.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Calvert. Is there, Councilor Hicks?
Thank you. Thank you for this proposal. It's disappointing that we didn't get it, but I guess you can't always get struck by lucky lightning twice. I have heard various people, you know, say to me that they think that the upgrade to the system has been a very worthwhile. I personally will be moving staff recommendation to put the $60,000 into the reduced scope. I think for community safety, it's not, you don't have to have staff, you put them in and they're just working all the time and they're working for your benefit. And I did read in a recent news article that it was instrumental, our CCTV was instrumental in assisting police with a pretty serious investigation. So I for one would like to move staff recommendation to go with the reduced scope. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Hicks. We do have a mover and a second with Councilor Shank. Is there any other concern?
Just quickly, it's possible to add to the next year, next year's budget if we wanted or without any further cost than what it normally is now? Or do you think?
Through your worship, so if you were to go beyond the scope that's outlined in this reduced scope, yes, there would be additional costs. It's something that council could consider as part of 2026 budget to to go back to the original scope, but there would be an additional cost for that.
Okay, so we're six months into this year, so it's not that far to look into next year to get to two more moving one, our portable ones if we wish. And that's not an issue, is it?
Yes, you could you could include that for consideration in the 2026 budget.
Thanks, Councilor Nari. And I'm just trying to think, when does the app, when do the applications come out for these? I'm I'm thinking it was later on in the fall, I think, if I'm not mistaken, am I correct?
Through your worship, yes, it was in the fall.
Yeah, so I mean, we could budget for the money in 2026, put the application in and budget for 2026. If if in fact, the granting is available again.
Through your worship, we did ask if they were going to do another intake and we didn't get a straight answer on that. So that could go either way, but it wasn't a yes or a no, but it it seemed to be like there may be some more out there at some point in time.
And and I think I think I can appreciate that as as that it's probably a little bit too far ahead for anybody to be making those decisions or to give you a straight answer anyways. So sorry, is there anything else, Deputy Mayor Calvert?
I've kicked this around 65 ways from Sunday and I I have to, I too think that the staff recommendation to add what cameras we can do, we'd already budgeted for this amount, although we didn't get the grant, we were looking forward to put more cameras in. But I I feel we we should, for the safety of the community and for what the cameras have been doing and what we've seen they've done, we should look forward to going to more cameras and then again applying for the grant if it comes up again in the fall for even more cameras. Because I have heard from several people, you know, how much more comfort they have walking around town with knowing the cameras are there. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Deputy Mayor Calvert. Is there, go ahead, Councilor Shank.
Over the years, we've got reports from Chris and the perks from recreation and the amount of damage that's been done to our, you know, our assets towards municipality. So a lot of people would say, oh, my goodness, you're spending $60,000 for, you know, for cameras. But this, if this deters a lot of the damage that's done in certain areas of our municipality and what the cost savings would be there, this is well worth because it'll pay dividends. So we're not continually fixing certain places all the time. Because if this deters some of those accidents of happening or, you know, deliberate damage, it'll definitely pay for itself. So that's why I agree with this.
Thanks, thanks, Councilor Shank. Mr. Grant.
And to you, Mr. Mayor, and to just to add to Councilor Shang's point. One of our single largest budget items is the contribution we make to the Ontario Provincial Police. And in the event that they're, you know, able to request this for investigative purposes, it really, if you will, supercharges that investment by giving them the the material they might need to have a a successful prosecution and prevent these things from happening again.
Great, thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there anything further? Seeing none, we do have a motion on the floor, so we'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, the motion's carried. Next matter, growth and infrastructure proposed legislative updates bill 17. I see Mr. Knob's coming up, so Mike, whenever you're ready, the floor is yours.
Thank you, your worship. The intent with this report and presentation this evening is to give council a sense of what bill 17, released on May 12th, would mean for the municipality. So the bill is a proposed set of legislative amendments to a number of different acts. And within the report, staff have pared down what exactly would be most applicable to the town. There are a number of proposed changes to other ministerial related acts that aren't necessarily applicable to the town. So we've zeroed in on on aspects of the bill that would be applicable to the town specifically. And staff are looking for any comment or or concerns that council might have such that we might be able to pass on any comments to the ministry as the the window to submit comments is quickly closing on on May 30th. I believe it, I believe it's May 30th. So we're we're looking for any any comments that council might have. And I'll I'll run through the the high points of the bill that are applicable to the town, just so it's it's clear for council. So first item under changes proposed to the Development Charges Act. So this this first item would exempt all long term care homes from having to pay development charges. So this is very much in line with former bills, Bill 23, for example, that fully exempts exempts affordable housing. So i- if a developer were to propose affordable housing, that meets the definition within the act, they they do not pay a development charge for for each unit. So that would extend to long term care homes. That's not retro, it's not proposed to be retroactive to previously approved long term care homes. For example, hospital and Omni both were applicable at the time. This would, for any future long term care homes, make them fully exempt. The province is looking to define capital costs being subject to regulations. So the capital costs that can be collected for through development charges encompass water, sewer, roads, fire, et cetera. The province is looking to scope that down and make a set of regulations which aren't yet released that would really limit the municipality's ability to collect for certain components of those capital costs. So we don't yet have an indication of exactly what they're looking to scope down to, but they're proposing to add, subject to regulations within to the act, within the act, that would then give them the ability to impose future regulations that would be subject to future development charge background studies and potentially limit the scope of what municipalities can collect development charges for. So if that's passed, another round of public comment would need to be sought by the province for proposed changes to any regulations that they would bring in into effect under that provision. Simplified process to development charge reductions. So right now, if if council were to reduce the rates overall, there would need to be an update to the background study. This would just eliminate the need for that. Council would pass an amending bylaw and the rates could drop as as council wished. So it provides a more streamlined mechanism for municipalities looking to reduce their development charges if they felt that it were a burden to development. Deferral of development charge payment to occupancy for all residential development. Currently, all rental residential development, where there are four or more residential units in a building, are subject to both reductions based on unit count or bedroom count, rather, per unit and deferral of payment to occupancy and there's a payment plan. So if you were to build a 10 unit rental residential building, you, the developer would get certain discounts per se through the act and they would not have to pay the charge upfront as is typical with other development. They would be deferred one sixth of the payment at occupancy and then the balance of the payments on annual installments for five years thereafter. So what this is proposing to do is maintain that approach for rental developments, but defer all, any and all residential development with regards, regardless of whether it's a condo or a a single detached unit, that's that's or a freehold townhome, it would defer the payment of those DCs to occupancy. And that's a request that that staff hear quite often is any way that we could defer this. As it's written right now, any requests for for any deferrals must come before council and council would need to pass a resolution to allow for that deferral. But this is building, this is proposed to build it right into the act and make an amendment that any new residential development, the municipality cannot collect that charge upfront. It gets collected at the occupancy stage. But again, the rental, the rental piece that was brought in through Bill 23 would not change. The ability for residential and institutional development to pay their DC earlier than the bylaw requires. Right now, there needs to be a an agreement under the act to allow that. We've never had a request to pay those fees early, so I doubt that that will be leveraged. There's a lower charge for the rate freeze. So there's there's a rate freeze in effect that was brought in through previous bills where certain planning applications are submitted. At the time that they're applied for, the rates in effect at that time are are held for a certain amount of time. So if there's a site plan application made, the rate in effect at the time the application is made, the rate for that development, once it gets to building permit, is held for a period of 18 months. So it, the intent there is for, was was for the province to incentivize development to occur sooner. So applications get in the door sooner, they can lock in their rate and get to building permit. So this would give the opportunity to lower the charge for the rate freeze if council were to reduce the overall fees. So meaning if an application were submitted and the rate in effect was was at a certain level, if 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 development charges were dropped at all, the rate would drop to the lower of the two. And allowing grouping of services for using credits. So if a identified project in the background study is being carried out by a developer, there would be credits applied on building, on a building permit by building permit basis to the developer to essentially pay for the municipality share in those offsite works or development related projects. This allows the municipality to to group those into more than one service area. So right now, if there's a a large water main being installed, that comes at a capital cost. Today, the act as written, any credits would only be applicable to that line item, that specific charge or in a specific line item in the overall charge. This allows the municipality to group the rates so it can be, their credit can be applied to multiple levels of service and effectively pay down that credit sooner to the developer. Province is also looking to define what local services are in regulations. So right now, local services are referenced broadly throughout the act. And effectively, it says, a municipality cannot collect development charges related to a local service. So meaning local water main, local sewer, local roads, interior to a subdivision, for example. There's no definition of what that is, and so municipalities are left with creating their own local service policy in their background study, which the town has. What this is looking to do is standardize what exactly local services means across the province. So there's nothing released yet, but they're proposing to build in, you know, subject to regulations within the act itself to give the province the ability to enact regulations that will articulate exactly what a local service means through that, through regulation and really streamline, not streamline, but make consistency, I guess, across the province. Because local service policies can vary from municipality to municipality. And so they're looking to standardize what exactly a local service truly is. So those are the high points of the Development Charges Act. The Planning Act is proposed to be amended to identify exactly what constitutes complete. to identify exactly what constitutes complete applications. So the province is looking to scope the review component, not the review component, sorry, but the the breadth of certain types of studies. So they're looking through regulations, again, forthcoming. But they're looking to give themselves the ability to pass regulations that would articulate exactly how deep of a dive a developer or proponent would need to go with regards to a servicing report, for example, or or any type of report. And they're looking to exclude sun and shadow studies, wind studies, urban design and lighting reports. So they're looking to remove those from reports that municipalities can request and looking to scope any others. Again, not sure what exactly that's going to look like. They're going to come back to municipalities and consult on that. But they're they're building in that ability for them, for the province to to limit what the municipality can request. There, the province is also proposing to provide as of right minor variances to certain degrees. So this would be a ten percent variance on a required setback. For example, that if a proposal comes in ten percent less than the required setback, then they wouldn't need technically a minor variance. They're they're building in a bit of a buffer. So if if we have a five meter side yard setback, for example, and a developer proposes four point five, they wouldn't need a minor variance to construct that dwelling. And the last item is related to the Building Code Act. And what this is proposing is that municipalities cannot pass municipal specific regulations to minimum construction, minimum components to construction. So some municipalities have requirements over and above the building code. This would eliminate the ability for municipalities to do that. The town does not have that in effect. We we have, our bylaw points directly back to the building code, so whatever's in the code is applicable. But some municipalities have gone over and above. And again, the province is looking to standardize what exactly is a compliant building through this proposed legislation. So that that's effectively an overview of what's applicable to the town. Again, there are other components of the bill, but those are the high points for council's awareness. And I'm available for any questions.
Great, thanks, Michael. Counselor X.
Thank you, worship. Oh, now I have to find what page it was on, sorry. It was related to the occupancy. Is it deferred until occupancy, the person's moving in? Or deferred until the issuance of the occupancy permit?
Through your worship, it would be deferred until the issuance of the occupancy permit.
Thank you very much.
Great, thanks, Counselor Hicks. Is there anything further? Counselor Schenk.
So if that's a single family dwelling, all right, is development bylaw charged one-sixth? And or is that only four units or more?
Through your worship, that's only for rental with four units or more. So that's that's not proposed to be changed. That's still in effect. But if you were to build a single family home, you would be charged the full rate, but you would only pay that at the occupancy stage.
Another thing, so if I'm putting a subdivision in and I don't want any streetlights, without a lighting plan, how are you going to force me to say, hey, I don't want any streetlights?
Through your worship, so although a lighting plan is proposed to be excluded, the lighting plan effectively would look at what the spillover of the lightings would be on adjacent properties and how well illuminated a street would be. The municipality still has the ability to require street lighting. We just don't have the ability to, we wouldn't have the ability to require an illumination plan to show exactly how that street lighting is going to function. We can still have standard policies and guidelines around what minimum requirements for development we would like to see, but it's just solely on the actual study itself.
Great, thanks, Mike. Is there anything else, Counselor?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Michael, thanks for this report. Is there anything that you presented to us tonight? Because this is more town affected here. Is there anything on here that you, that raises concerns for you or David?
Through your worship, I would say on the on the face of it, not necessarily. So exemption of long term care homes, we just got two hundred and twenty-eight bed long term care homes, not anticipating a whole lot coming in the door in the very near future as a result of that large amount of supply coming in. Deferral of development charges to occupancy, it does have an impact on cash flow for capital projects, but it's not a waiver. The the charge is coming in. It's just a matter of when exactly that occurs. So if this, I I could see this as being an incentive to get housing started more quickly. So if this weren't in effect, you know, there could be a delay in housing starts. With this in effect, the housing starts may occur sooner. So we would see more housing stock coming online in a more timely fashion, and we know we're still getting the charge. It it would certainly have an impact on cash flowing projects, but there's also the, you know, the fringe benefit of understanding that it's likely to result in more happening sooner than not, if that makes sense. It's hard to quantify what exactly that would, you know, how many units would ultimately benefit from that or how many new units would come online sooner. But there certainly is that potential that it could bring bring units online sooner.
Okay, great, thank you.
Great, thanks, Dave. Is there any other questions or comments from Michael, Counselor X?
Thank you, worship. I'm going to backtrack just a little bit. Earlier tonight during the committee of adjustment, when Southview was looking at swapping out parking lot property, this sort of thing. And I was looking at the parcel next to it. And I'm, I, I asked, what are they building, like another school? Or, you know, I didn't look at it that closely, but it's actually, looks like it's apartment buildings. If there's no sun or, and I'm at twelve meters building height, what would that be? Three story? Is that what they're proposing?
Three or four.
Okay, so you have a school there. So there's no sun study to show it's going to block all of the morning sun on the playground or these buildings. Is it going to create a wind tunnel? Is it going to block all the wind? Like, just that that sort of question? Because it's next to an institution, right, where there's people there every day, five days of the week. So and none of that's going to be required now. There'll have to be no, no answer there.
Through your worship, as as proposed, yes, ultimately. So although we can't require a sun and shadows study, the town can still look into what the potential shadowing impacts would be. So with that, I mean, there are calculators online where we can look at angle of the sun at different times of the year, different times of the day. And through a simple line diagram, we can determine height, angle of the sun and and what amount of shadow that would cast. So we could do our own assessment to that effect. We just can't require, you know, an architect to furnish that to be supplied with an application. We would need to do that on our end if it's a, if it's an item of concern. I hope that helps answer the question. On on the wind side, hard to determine without truly a wind study what potential wind tunnels may be created. That that's a much heavier undertaking than a than a sun and shadow study. So it's hard to comment on that one, exactly how we would be able to mitigate potential concerns and have some answers in the absence of being able to request that. I would, I would note that those are predominantly more GTA focused, where it's larger, taller towers that could have the a negative impact on buildings downstream of the wind, for example, where it could cause structural issues. So that, those items would be captured during the the engineering design and that sort of thing for a building. But in this case, we we've not requested a wind study, for example, and I think it's, those are primarily focused on GTA municipalities.
Thank you.
Great, thanks, Counselor Hicks. Is there anything else? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation that council receiver information that growth and infrastructure service proposed legislative update Bill seventeen report, moved by Deputy Mayor Galver, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, all in favor of that motion. Propose, motion's carried. Next matter, growth and infrastructure, land listing disposition strategy and residential real estate agent of record RFP update. And Michael, you're going to speak to that as well?
Yes, thank you, worship. So I wanted to provide council an update on the status and progress of our land listing, land inventory, land disposition strategy and residential real estate agent of record RFP. So over the past several months, staff have been working to consolidate all land assets that the municipality owns. And what we've done is go through a number of different sources of information to validate our understanding of what land we own. So MPAC has a listing of land. We can, we can print off a listing of every single role in the municipality and it it identifies who the owner of each each role is. We've also cross referenced that against Terranet. And what we've done there is we've searched potentially every combination that I can think of in the, I mean, the current amalgamated municipality and pre-amalgamation municipality names. So the the searching had to be perfect. It was quite an undertaking, but it, we we did combination of Town of Napanee, Town of Greater Napanee, Napanee, Richmond, Richmond Township, Township of Richmond, et cetera. Like that, different, different variations of the name. We've, we got hits on essentially all of those. So lands were registered in different formats on, for different, different naming conventions. So we've taken that, we've placed it into the G, our GIS. We've placed the MPAC data into our GIS. We're seeing where they align. And we're essentially validating our our listing using that approach. So it's a combination of of two different sources and a visual cue, visual reference to be very sure that data from from source one and source two are matching. And where there is a mismatch, we're able to identify that. So what we've, what we're working to do now is now that that listing is is completed, going through each land, each parcel itself, identifying the zoning, the official plan designation, any known infrastructure improvement needs, whether it's declared surplus or not, potential for any swapping of land, understanding if there are any active leases. So for example, some some vacant land that the town owns is farmed. So presumably, there's a lease on that land for a farmer to to cultivate on that. So understanding what the lease terms and implications are prior to any listings, suitability for certain lands for active transportation or public use, understanding any easements that are registered on the property, the the area, the frontage, you know, if it's a waterfront lot, if it's a landlocked or a very irregular parcel that can have, you know, more more scrutiny or special consideration, and understanding what exactly that land is being used for today. So its potential for future and how it's being used today and any encumbrances or or aspects that should be taken into consideration when when listing land and offers come forward to council. So we went through the process to validate our ownership. It was a bit of a challenge with the two sources of data and trying to integrate that to the GIS. The mapping from the province through the county to the town, there was a bit of a disconnect on how we were able to validate those parcels, but we worked through that. It took took a bit of an undertaking, but we we've been able to overcome that and have been reviewing surplus land listings and and reporting that council has rendered previously to give council the wholesome picture of what lands have been considered previously and have already been declared surplus. So that's where we are with the the listing. It's complete. We're still working to fi, like, fill in all of those, say, areas of interest related to each parcel. And next, we will be developing land disposition policy framework for council's consideration, and that will come forward at a separate meeting. But we're looking to identify clear classification rules, requirements around specific types of development that can occur on certain lands, strategically requiring certain types of developments through purchase and sale agreements on certain lands, understanding environmental considerations, building in the potential for land swaps and partnerships and requirements for retention of lands to benefit the public, such as parks, additional park space. And lastly, we are anticipating to release within the next two to three weeks an RFP to to retain a residential real estate agent of record. And that would go through the routine RFP process. So we're in the draft stages of that now, and we'll be, we'll be issuing that within about two weeks or so. So if there are any questions, I would certainly be happy to answer those.
Great, thanks, Michael. Is there any questions for Michael? Deputy Mayor Galver, and then I'll go to Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, Michael. I really appreciate, sorry, through your worship. Thank you, Michael. I appreciate the the work you and your team are doing on this as we speak. Just got another text, wanting to know if there's any land available for building condos. So you can expect a phone call soon on that, I would imagine. So, yeah, I can't wait to get this out there. And I think once we get it all done, you're going to see, see a lot more development take place. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Galver, Counselor Hicks.
Through you, your worship. Wow, that was quite an undertaking. My eyes were getting blurry just thinking about the the cross referencing between Terranet and and old rules. Once the inventory is done, and this is maybe a question for for general council, but also for the benefit of the public. Once the entire inventory is done, all the questions have been answered. We have a very clear understanding of what is where. Does it come back to council then to review that entire inventory? And we, with the assistance of staff, determine what is actually surplus? Okay, thank you.
Through your worship, yes, that that's the intent. So the next step would be bring the land listing to council and and potentially the disposition policy. But the intent is to get that land listing created, all of the classification criteria information filled out, so it's a very clear picture for council and essentially have a conversation line by line if if council so chooses. Staff would go through an exercise to identify what had been declared surplus, why, when, and identify some low hanging fruit, if you will, on what lands are are on the listing of of the register that makes sense to surplus and and get on the market. That, you know, really is is available and and something that can be sold where we can see development occur quickly, hopefully, and start to see the revenue, reserve balances start to build.
Yeah, go ahead, Andrew.
Thank you, worship. And so later on, sorry, I've got the wrong glasses on. Later on in the meeting, we're also having the discussion about road closures and easements. That property is also included in the land registry, or is that a separate undertaking?
Through your worship, we're, this listing is focused on parcels other than road allowances. Road allowances are extremely difficult to get out of either database because predominantly old, old road allowances aren't captured in in the Terranet system. So it would be a matter of stumbling upon them through a survey plan and a title search. It it would be out of the scope of this this project to include every single potential road allowance. Yeah, it, I wish that were the case, but in the in the interest of time for staff to get this completed, we wouldn't be recommending in including every single potential unopened road allowance because they're just very difficult to quantify.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrew. Go ahead, Counselor Schenk.
So, Mike, all this work in the bylaw and everything else be done by the end of June, correct?
Through your worship, the intent is for staff to finish the listing off, bring it to council before the end of June, and ideally late June, potentially early May. Have a recommendation to council on, depending when we, when we get RFP responses back, but turn that around quickly to get the residential real estate agent of record sorted out and retained. But, yeah, the listing, we're anticipating coming back to council in June and the dispositions policy coming either at that same meeting or or immediately following.
So so the class one and class two properties, they're going to be discussed at a later date also. So, yeah, I agree with everything that you've done. We've gone through the process. It's going to be clear and everybody understands what it is. So move staff recommendation.
Great, thank you, Counselor Schenk. We do have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Deputy, sorry, Counselor Norrie. We do have a motion on the floor that council receive for information, growth and infrastructure, land listing disposition strategy. Growth and infrastructure land listing disposition strategy in residential real estate, agent of record RFP update report. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to the presentation of the reports in front of us? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, motion's carried. Next matter, executive services update to land sale bylaw. And Madam Clerk, I see you moving to the front. So whenever you're settled in, the floor be yours.
So through your worship, this report is, uh, complimentary to the report the council just heard. The land sale bylaw is intending to deal with the mechanics of how land is declared surplus and how land transactions occur, while the disposition strategy policy will identify, uh, how land sale transactions are prioritized, uh, and where staff efforts are directed. Um, this report is in response to direction we received last year to improve transparency in how the town does its land sale business. There are a number of recommended changes in the attached document. Um, if council is supportive of those proposed changes, we can bring that bylaw exactly as written to the next meeting for adoption. Uh, if there's any, um, specific or general comments council has about additional changes, we can certainly take those into consideration. Again, the goal would be to time this with all of the other land stuff and have it all wrapped up by the end of June, uh, if possible. Um, the most significant changes here are to replace the community lands team approach with, uh, having the general manager of growth and infrastructure as the single contact point for the land portfolio. Um, generally if everyone is responsible for something, no one is responsible for something. So, uh, we believe this will help streamline for both staff and, uh, and residents and, uh, yes, and, uh, the other big change would be, um, updating the bylaw so that the unsolicited offers, uh, on land are only, uh, to be used for, uh, a class two sale where it can only be sold as an addition to an existing neighboring lot, um, or where there is an element of a government partnership and community benefit. Uh, anything that can be sold on the open market must be sold on the open market with this proposed change, um, as well as including, uh, specific minimum requirements for the reports that go to council and an element of the default being that we include some, uh, level of reporting on every open session agenda when there's a closed session land transaction report. Um, and as previously mentioned, our intention is to bring that comprehensive listing, once it's done, for council to validate the existing, uh, declar- like the existing surplus property listing. Uh, and while it's not specifically in the bylaw, uh, but it could be added if council wanted. Staff's intention would be to do that at least once per council term for anything that hangs on the list for an extended period of time to make sure that that is still the will of council. Any questions?
Uh, thanks, Jessica. Is there any questions or comments for Jessica with respect to her presentation or the report? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation that council receive for information, executive services update to land sale bylaw report. And further, that council direct that an amendment to the land sale bylaw be brought forward in accordance with the recommendations in this report. Further, that council adopt, that upon council adoption of the amended land sale bylaw and the new land disposition strategy policy, council deemed the resolution 280 slash 24 to be completed and the land sale moratorium be lifted. Moved by Counselor Schenk, seconded by Deputy Mayor Calver. Is there any further comments, questions or concerns with respect to, uh, the motions on the floor? Seeing none, just briefly, I just want to thank staff for, for the enormous amount of work that they've done on this. Um, it would appear to be fairly simple process. At one point we push a button and everything should come out and that's not exactly what it was. But, uh, um, I'm deeply impressed with the amount of transparency and openness that, that we've now installed with respect to, uh, uh, land dispositions and fairness. And I think that's gonna go a long way for the future of our municipality. So thank you staff for doing that. Counselor Hicks.
Just for my own interest, this is the very first time this type of project has been undertaken since amalgamation. Am I right?
Through your worship, um, to my knowledge, to this degree, yes. Uh, there are former land listings, but missing pieces were, have been found.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much. And again, hard work is very appreciated.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Schenk.
And like any growing municipality, what I love about this is everything is out in the open. Everybody has their role. Everybody understands their role. You know, every, the, the accountability, the transparency and everything else. So there's no, you know, and it's public lands that you're dealing with. And what this person does with their own land is their own business. But what they do this year is totally transparent from one end to the other. So I, I just, I totally concur with what the mayor and everybody else would be saying. But, uh, very well done. I like it.
Thanks, uh, thanks, Mike. Is there anything further? Seeing none, uh, we do have a motion on the floor, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor. Opposed, motion's carried. Uh, next matter, executive services update to road closure and sale policy. Madam Clerk, you're gonna deal with that one as well.
So through your worship, um, this one has been a little delayed, partly just because we wanted to deal with all of the land stuff at once. Um, again, if council wants to make any amendments, uh, that can certainly be done either at this meeting or we defer to a future meeting and bring it back if there's any changes council wants to see. Um, previously when this was discussed, the main goals of updating this policy were to, um, add a little bit more clarity about the public consultation policy, um, and the number of steps and the length of steps to make sure that applicants had a very clear understanding of what the process was right from the beginning and adding greater clarity that council does have the sole discretion to approve or deny any, um, requests with respect to road allowances. Uh, and then, um, the largest change would be to update the rate at which we sell road allowances, which has not been updated since 2007. So the rates you see here, um, staff obtained, uh, average market rates for saleable lots as of summer 2024. And then on the recommendation, uh, of the company we worked with, drop that down to 50%. However, if council wishes to drop that further, which would potentially have the impact of selling more small lots, more road allowances, if, if that is council's goal, you could drop those rates by a further factor. Um, it, it all depends on what po- council's policy goal there is. If your goal is maximum money for the land you're selling or if the goal is to get rid of these little sliver parcels that are hanging around in your inventory. Um, if there's any questions, I'm happy to take those.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is there any questions or comments with respect to Jessica's presentation or the report that's in front of us? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation that council receive for information, the executive services update to road closure and sale policy report. And further, that council approve the adoption of the revised road closure and sale policy as presented at this meeting and repeal policy A98 slash 07 dot slash 27 dash 02. And further, that council direct staff to remove the resolution 175 slash 24 from the resolution tracker. Moved by Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Martin. If there are any further comments, questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor. Opposed, motion's carried. And Madam Clerk, our timing is pretty good tonight. We're at 8:29. I think it'd be appropriate to have our 10 minute break. So, uh, we'll see us folks back in about, uh, 8:40.
Great, thanks and welcome back everyone. Next up on our agenda is Parks Recreation and Culture Youth Wellness Hub at 12 Market Square. And Mr. Brown, I think you're going to speak to this.
Yes, thank you, worship members of council. So this report comes to you following the deputation you heard on May 13th from the Greater Nappany Youth Services Coalition regarding a youth wellness hub located at 12 Market Square. So just summarize the report. Town staff currently have direction from council to sell the building with plans to fund future capital upgrades to Town Hall and the Market Square property. My report just summarizes some of the important information from the building condition assessment. The condition assessment was done in October of 2021. And it basically identified based on the facility condition index that it wasn't poor condition, but with some significant upgrades early on, it would get into the excellent to good condition immediately after. But that would require some investment into into the building. Mainly, the recommendations were wall foundations, moisture protection, brickwork repairs, parging coat. So mainly the exterior of the building. I also touched on some of the operating expenses. Just to give an idea, the operating expenses for that building, wages for cleaning and maintenance, water sewer, heat, supplies, building maintenance, service contracts and insurance. Just to give council a comparison, in 2025, we budgeted $5,904 for that building as it sits empty right now. If you compared that to when staff were in there fully working every day. For comparison, 2018 number, our operating budget for that building was was $14,000. So a little bit more, but not significantly more. And then just just lastly, I just wanted to touch on, you know, my role with the organization and my mandate. This partnership is is exactly the type of partnership that that I would be seeking so that we could improve or increase programming in the community. So I'm very interested in what was presented and what could be in Greater Nappany. Where I get conflicted is I have a very specific mandate from council, recommended to council by the Market Square Advisory Committee and approved by council to execute the vision of Town Hall and the Market Square property. And so to do that, our funding strategy right now is to sell 12 Market Square. Like we have other buildings in the Market Square so that we can fund those capital upgrades. So that's where I get conflicted. I should be seeking these partnerships, that that is part of my role. But I do have a mandate to to execute that vision for for what Town Hall will be and what the Market Square will be. So before you, I do have a staff recommendation that council does sell the building at 12 Market Square as originally planned. But I do think it's important that staff continue discussions with the Greater Nappany Youth Services Coalition and explore alternative locations for the youth wellness hub. I think it's a very valuable service that we can try to partner with them to offer to to our community. So I'm sure there's a few questions and I'm happy to answer them.
Yep, great. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Deputy Mayor Calvert.
Thank you through your worship. Chris, as we're sitting here tonight going through this, in my mind, I was thinking we have a partnership with the Morning Star Mission using part of the old train station. I'm not sure how much that is or how much they use or whatever. Is that something that maybe we could look at doing with this youth wellness hub as a pilot project? I think Morning Star has been there for quite quite some time now and maybe we should look at letting another organization in there. It's just a thought for my last prospect.
I think Deputy Mayor Calvert, I think Mr. Grant wants to start to weigh in. I can weigh in as well. So I know staff working extremely hard to unconflict Mr. Brown with respect to his mandate. So, Mr. Grant, did you want to start?
I will, and through through you worship, the members of council. So I'm in agreement with the Director of Parks Recreation and Culture. This is the kind of project that we would seek to partner with with either, you know, cultural or recreational amenities operated by a third party that we empower is the model that the mandate letter presented and passed by council contemplates. You know, in anticipation of this discussion, we we took a look at some of the various facilities and amenities that we have as a municipality, train station being one of them. Then I did have a conversation with the Morning Star Mission as recently as this morning. Just, you know, in anticipation that this is something that may come up. When I spoke with them, they're amenable to moving to a different location. For them, it's the space as well as, you know, a space with maybe some heat. That is, that is the critical component. That that particular space is is not mission critical for them. And so in looking at other opportunities of of how do we continue to support them? Because they do, they would be giving up a lease that they have the right to renew until the end of 20, I want to say the end of 27. There are options that would not impact to a great degree current operations that could accommodate the Morning Star Mission. And I would suggest to the deputy mayor that that is something that we could take a look at in the overall review, if you will, of of how, if and how we could support this organization, which obviously would come back to council for consideration and approval.
Great, thank you, Mr. Grant. Counselor Schenk.
I move staff recommendation that and staff will be coming back with a further report. See how we can help out the youth in whatever location it might be and what other arrangements that it might have. I think it's a well worth organization at the same time, you know. That's county social services too, but all I'm saying is is let's see what else we can do. I agree with selling 12 Market Square and that money going ahead and then fixing up the Town Hall. So we'll get a report back from staff and then they can make the possible contract negotiations or whatever with any other possible.
Yeah, great, thank you. I think Madam Clerk wants to weigh in first, but we'll keep your motion there.
Sorry, through your worship, I just wanted to confirm because the staff recommendation doesn't specifically include reporting back. Are you wanting that added on to the motion? The council directs staff to report back and is that within a specific timeframe?
So what my suggestion is, is because the deputy mayor is already, there's one suggestion there, there might be other suggestions. So, you know, if you could go ahead and come back at the next meeting, I don't know if you could have something done by that time. That's between the mayor and the CIO. So and Chris, so if you can come back with something that's amicable for all parties concerned, that'd be great.
Mr. Grant.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I would say coming back in the next meeting would be ambitious, Counselor Schenk. But I would say that if it is agreeable to council, we could look to late July. That would allow us to, you know, meet with all parties involved, identify different, if we can come sooner, we certainly will. But as a as a a drop dead date, if you will, late July, where we could come back with something that would be fully baked, costed, and the opportunity to meet with all different partners. And also in respect to Mr. Brown's workload, I I think that the goal of getting good people is keeping good people and not not killing them. So we're gonna need to maybe push that a bit.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
So Matthew and Terry, what I'm, the only reason why I was kind of doing it as quick, do it as quickly as possible because I'm not sure what the timeline of this youth hub and those people that are trying to go. I just don't want to leave them out beyond any granting possibilities they have. It's always better to know. So I, it, just quicker the better. That's all I would say.
Thanks. I think Counselor Hicks is wanting to weigh in. But again, I don't think it's all that time sensitive. But the end of July, I think, is is probably as aggressive a timeline just with respect to having known that staff has been working extremely hard with respect to some viable options. Go ahead, Counselor Hicks, I'll get out of the way, so.
Thank you, worship. Before we go any further, I do have one question for for council and for staff based on the RFP for the residential listings or properties. I know that I had asked a question about Hydro, which is has been, I guess, a sticking point at various times. And Michael Nobes, the general manager, indicated that Hydro was probably still going to take on the project from a, I believe it was a health and safety perspective on that project at no cost to the town and that that would probably also carry over to a new owner. Which leads me to the question, the building has sent, sat empty for two years, which is why 12 Market became a topic and and a proposed location for the coalition. I am very pleased that staff have been engaged in this and have done some work behind the scenes to see what else is available in order to keep the momentum going on this. My first question is, how soon can we get a for sale sign on that building? A, to fund the work for the Town Hall and the Market Square. And then my next question is, I would like to propose an alternative motion to, it's not a lot different, but it's a bit more specific to this this particular item on the agenda.
Thanks, Counselor Hicks. Who wants to speak to, go ahead, Mr. Grant?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll ask Mr. Nobes to to weigh in as he sees fit. With respect to how soon can we put a sign, a for sale sign on 12 Market Square? I mean, the short answer is as soon as you tell us. So that would be, I would suggest a motion that would provide a carve out from the moratorium, which is which is in place, which is your privilege. And then we, you know, we would engage, I would suggest Rogers and Trainer, because that's more of a commercial lot than a residential. But I'll, Michael, take over if you have anything to add there, Michael.
Yeah, through through your worship, just to build on on the CIO's point. So that could be a mixed use building. So I I know that Rogers and Trainer has this on their radar currently. So if council's goal is to list that as soon as possible, the Rogers and Trainer does have that that information to to put a listing together soon, as soon as possible. But yeah, again, with it being there, the potential for mixed use, I think it would be well aligned with with Rogers and Trainer's abilities.
Okay, thanks, Michael. I know that Counselor Schenk wanted to make a motion, which is staff recommendation. It sounds like Counselor Hicks may want to do a friendly amendment to that motion. And I know that Deputy Mayor Calvert wants to weigh in. So Counselor Schenk, did you want to make the staff recommendation? Then we'll hear Counselor Hicks's friendly amendment is what I'm guessing. Or did you want to withdraw and let Counselor Hicks make the motion? It's up to you. Let's, what are you suggesting, Counselor Hicks? Let's, let's just go completely rogue here. What are you going to suggest?
Thank you through you, your worship. That council received the information, the Parks Recreation and Culture Youth Wellness Hub at 12 Market Square report. And further that council sells the building located at 12 Market Square as planned. And further that council directs staff to continue discussions with the Greater Nappany Youth Services Coalition regarding potential partnership opportunities and explore alternative locations for the youth wellness hub and possible grant opportunities with other levels of government, without saying it's county, provincial and federal. And further that council directs staff to provide an update report on these discussions to the July 22nd meeting.
Somebody had some internal thing at July 26th meeting. So, okay, yeah, I'll withdraw mine. It wasn't, it was a friendly one. There was no, there was nothing vicious or malicious.
Thank you, Counselor Schenk. And what I will do is I'm just going to ask Counselor Hicks, did you wish when you say that you want to, that the council sells the building located at 12 Market Square as planned forthwith? Or Madam Clerk, is there another word that we need to use there to suggest that it should be done like today?
Through your worship, you could certainly amend that line and direct staff to have the building listed as soon as possible.
So as planned, do you want to change the wording as planned to as soon as possible? Will that suffice?
Yes, that would be, and I think what that will do is make it very clear that the original intent has always been to sell that building and to fund the upgrades and basically the beautification of downtown without sacrificing the potential for this partnership. And I'm I'm sure that staff will be on the phone this week. I'm counting on it. So I'm I'm feeling very hopeful and really quite quite glad that this is coming so quickly. Thank you.
Thanks. So we have a motion moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Schenk. Is there any further, Counselor Norrie? And then I'll go to Counselor Penel.
Just briefly, usually I think business, but in this one, I'm thinking with my heart and the youth are our future. I I'm opposed to this motion. I would rather we let them use it for a year. It's not a lot of money. Let's invest in our youth. We have a building ready to go and I liked their presentation. Staff can still look after, but I'll be opposed to the motion.
Great, thanks, Counselor Norrie. Counselor Penel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. I have a question for Michael regarding putting the the building up for sale so soon with the hydro problem that we have where the hydro is fed from this building. So if we do put it up for sale, then it's going to be conditional on that hydro getting separated. And that can still take a long drawn out period of time to have that done.
Through your worship, yeah, that is correct. So that's certainly something that we would make clear to the public is that that would be imposed as a condition of the seller is that we would look for a closing that gives us the the lead time to get those those services separated, which ultimately is going to be hinging on Hydro's timeline. We'll be able to do it. It's not a tough job for our electricians. It's it's getting the approvals from Hydro. That's going to take some time. I do have a site visit scheduled with a more senior technician for early June. Hasn't been determined exactly the date. But the technician is going to reach out to me. I'm going to meet with them on site and our electrician to go over everything again and ideally get a better handle on what exactly the plan is from Hydro's perspective, what they can ultimately commit to. The the comments around likely the costs of the upgrades are going to be on Hydro's dime. Hasn't been put on paper, but there are some substantial health and safety implications if they don't undertake these upgrades. So the staff that were involved previously gave us a pretty good level of comfort that it's likely to occur. But we're going to seek further clarification in that regard as well as timeline. So more to come in early June, but just wanted to make council aware of that.
Thank you. Counselor Penel, thank you. Mr. Nobes, Counselor Hicks. Oh, sorry, Madam Clerk, did you want to weigh in first and I'll go to Counselor Hicks?
Sorry, through your worship, I did just want to correct my earlier statement. While council approved in principle the lifting of the land sale moratorium, it was conditional on some further reports coming in June. So I do think we should further tweak this amendment or motion just to say that despite the moratorium, council directs staff to list this specific building as soon as possible. Just to be very clear that that's council's direction here.
Counselor Hicks?
I'm fine with that and June is only five days away, four days away now. So if I I think by the time the paperwork is done, we'll probably have our answer on the moratorium. So it's, I'm fine with that.
And Counselor Schenk. Yep, so they're both agree with the friendly amendment, so. Sorry, Counselor Hicks.
So I would like to answer or maybe address Counselor Norrie's concern. And I too, when I woke up this morning. too, when I woke up this morning, was of the very same opinion, but based on some of what's just happened and just very general conversations. So I was always told, it's easier to find a new job when you've already got a job, hence the request for a one-year pilot. But if we can show that we're willing to work as a partner and put this group, these programs into a permanent location where they don't have to pack up and move in a year, and it would be one year, because the mandate is to sell that building, I think it is worthwhile to pursue the alternate location, because the amount of time it would take for them to prepare and move into 12 Market is the same amount of time it would take them to prepare and move into a permanent location with a signed partnership agreement with the town of Greater Napanee and a five-year term on it to start, which then in turn show that you're really serious about this partnership, which makes the application for funding for those 16 agencies, plus our municipality, that much more, it's not just a pilot, it's, we're in it to win it, basically. So I think that this is the right approach, and we just keep searching until we find something that works. I think what was discussed is very viable, and it solves many, many problems before really they even get started. So that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Hicks. Is there anything else? Seeing none, I'll just speak briefly. I know that staff, and I know that council, is very eager to try and help these folks out, and I know that's part of Mr. Brown's mandate, to try and help these folks out to find a home for them. It's my belief that there's an extremely viable path forward to be able to provide what this organization needs with the resources that we have at hand. By doing that, it's also going to assist Mr. Brown in succeeding in his mandate in providing the necessary funds to finish the renovations to Town Hall. And by finishing the renovations to Town Hall, it's going to provide another space for the community to use, really at their will. And so the path that I think staff is working on, I think is an extremely viable and beneficial path to not only the user groups that are involved in this discussion, but also the municipality as a whole. And I really see a win-win-win situation for everybody that's involved. And I know it's sort of fairly fresh, because a lot of the conversations that occurred, occurred this morning. So, but a lot of things I do, I do unfeel, and this just feels right. So I think we provide staff the opportunity to clear what small hurdles may exist, and I have all the faith in the world that they'll be able to do that. And I think we, as a municipality, as a community, are going to succeed in our goals to provide what we need to provide for the municipality. So is there anything that came out of my ramblings that anyone would like to comment about? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, we do have a motion that's on the floor, and you have what you need. If there's nothing else, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the motion that's on the floor. Opposed. Motion's carried. Next matter up is emergency services purchase of ice-water rescue equipment. And I believe Chief here is going to speak to that.
Thank you, your worship, members of council. I'm here tonight to recommend the purchase of water and ice rescue equipment that is aging out of service and also required to meet compliance for our current service levels. That would be water entry and still water and ice rescue entry and shore-based water rescue services, throw bags and reaching equipment. This arises out of a March 22 incident where two of our members were injured after they went over the dam at the Napanee River. And although a life was saved, there was a very dynamic moment in those moments of that save that gave us great pause for reflection. And through that pause, we also had a visit from the Ministry of Labor, and as a result, the Minister of Labor representative wrote three planning orders. This one is a planning order tonight before he was really a response to planning order number two, which is referenced in the report. That's to make sure that all of our firefighters have the adequate training and equipment to do the job they need to do with the approved service levels council has approved for us to provide. Following the incident, we did a full post-incident analysis review, and we took inventory of our equipment and our training levels. And I can say today that we are not doing swift water rescue or any attempt to do that in any way, shape or form, and that was stopped. And we are ensuring that all of our members understand what our service levels are and the requirements to meet those service levels. So nobody will be undertaking any type of shore-based or water-based rescue, entry or ice rescue until they have that training, at least at the awareness level. This equipment will ensure that we have the adequate equipment, the minimum standard, and in support with the training to do the job we need to do. And I'm happy to answer any questions of council tonight.
Great, thank you, Chief. Is there any questions or comments for the chief with respect to his report or the presentation that he's made this evening? Sorry. We do have a recommendation that council received for information, emergency services purchase ice-water rescue equipment report, and further that council approves the purchase of the equipment as a capital expenditure with $21,553 plus payable HST to be funded from the reserves and $9,209 plus payable HST to be funded through a third-party cost recovery. Moved by Counselor Shank, seconded by Counselor Hicks. If there's no further comments, questions or concerns, Deputy Mayor Cowherd.
I just had one question. So it says they won't be doing any swift water rescue. Do we have any plans in the future of getting trained for swift water rescue?
Thank you, through your worship. It is in the service level document that was shared with council previously, that we are planning to meet the intent of technical rescue certification standards, which would be sunsetting in 2028. So I would intend to bring a report back to council on the implications of that, as I would with all new services we would provide. But we did at that in the service level that we are looking forward to ensuring based on the risks. And so that would be the response to that question.
Yep, go ahead, Deputy McCowherd.
Just one more follow-up. Thank you, your worship. And at that time, would we also look and see if any of our neighboring departments have swift water rescue as well, as there are a number of dams around the area as well, correct? So, thank you.
Yes, your worship, we would actually, and to combine that kind of mutual aid or automatic aid with our neighboring partner agencies would be something that would be a strong consideration, one we do bring in recommendations forward.
Great, thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deputy McCowherd. Is there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we do have a motion on the floor. We'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion that's on the floor. Opposed. Motion's carried. Executive Services Transit Options for Greater Napanee, and I think Mr. Grant, you're going to speak to that?
So through you, your worship, to members of council, council will be aware that over the past number of meetings, or several meetings this year, we've had several transit discussions. We've had discussions over Deseranto Transit. We have had an overview of micro-transit or on-demand transit. We've also had a presentation from a local taxi company about transit for seniors and low-income rides, subsidy program, if you will. So in line with council direction, just to provide an overview of the options and the costing for those options, I'm going to go through that today, just to, at a high level, give council an overview of if and when the municipal, well, I would say when the municipality decides to get into the transit business. And when is a conversation all municipalities have, there's no right answer for that, but that is the determining factor, and the ability to pay for that would be a determining factor. Often, municipalities are larger than us when they get into that, but there are options that I'll go through, and then recommendations at the end about how I'm recommending we view the transit issue from this point forward. So at a high level, the options available to you, traditional-rooted system, where we would own the rolling stock, as it's referred to, the buses, whether it be larger buses or smaller buses, the infrastructure that goes with that, the transit drivers would be employees, similar to what you would see in a Belleville, a Kingston, a Hamilton, a Toronto, that kind of thing. That particular system would differ from the Deseranto Transit, which was sort of a single-rooted system. In order to do that, you would be looking for anywhere between $80,000 to $900,000 for, per bus, depending on what you're looking for. And that would be different if you were looking for a smaller bus that was similar to Deseranto Transit, would obviously be a much lower cost than a much larger bus in larger urban areas. That would not include sort of the capital for any facilities you would need in terms of a garage. Breakdown for, you know, according to the Financial Accountability Office of Ontario, which sort of did an assessment on what the average cost to operate a system are outside of necessary capital costs, about 43% of salaries are salaries and benefits, 28% are vehicle and facility maintenance, 17% would be administration, 8% would be fuel, 4% for miscellaneous. The exact cost of a system is, without an actual sort of route plan, it would be difficult to tell you what a system would cost, because it depends on what kind of system you would want. You know, it would vary, I would suggest, from a few routes to many routes. A fixed route system in a municipality like ours, I would suggest, would necessarily exclude rural residents. You would need to focus it in urban areas. And, you know, as I'll get to in the recommendations, I think a fixed route, traditional system is cost prohibitive for our municipality. I don't think we can afford it, and even if we could, I don't know that we would choose it. You know, given the geography of our municipality, the newer options that are available, I don't know that a fixed route system would suit the needs for our municipality in general. Other options that are available, council will have heard of with the presentation is micro-transit. So newer, but not new, entrant to the market. I always describe it, and maybe, you know, as it's almost a combination of, you know, transit and Uber. So picture like an Uber ride, but you're doing it with other people who are sharing similar routes. So costs can vary on that, depending on what kind of system that you set up, whether or not you own some, all or none of the capital assets. You can go from a flexible fixed route system, again, I don't recommend a fixed route system for us, to a hybrid system, which is a combination of fixed and on-demand or fully on-demand. You know, you are seeing this in a number of municipalities globally. In Canada, you're starting to see smaller municipalities have fully on-demand systems, like Canora, which replaced their conventional system. You know, cities like Hamilton, they use it to do last mile, first mile. So in transit systems, the common vernacular of last mile, first mile, that is a major transit challenge. How do you get people from their home to the bus stop and from the bus stop to their destination? And so a lot of people are using micro-transit, or a lot of larger municipalities are using micro-transit as their last mile, first mile solution. We'll pick you up, we'll drop you off at the closest transit stop, and then you can take it, take traditional transit to where you need it to go. You know, when I took a look at some of the more recent stuff, Canora, Ontario, 15,000 people, and I use that because it's not dissimilar to the population, though the geography is different, they're a little more condensed than we are. But they went from a fixed route system to a fully on-demand system, and they saw transit ridership increase by 183%. They charge $2.50 a ride. There, when I took a look at the costing for Greater Napanee, there's a range. So I would say that you're specifically looking at a range between half a million and $900,000 a year in operating. That's what you're looking at to operate micro-transit. You would have a one-time setup fee of probably in the neighborhood of $120,000. What 500,000 does is give you like a Monday to Friday service, seven to seven, and you pre-book it. If you go to the $900,000 option, you're looking at seven days a week, seven to seven, fully on-demand. So that, those would be the options for Greater Napanee if you wanted to go into a transit system on our own. I don't know that financially we're in a position to do half a million to $900,000 on our own. I think it's, I think it's the right system, candidly. I just don't know that it's the right system right now, or I don't know that it's the right system by ourselves. But if and when the municipality wants to pursue a public transit system, and at some point, we're, as a municipality, we're going to want to do that. This is the kind of system that I think that we would want to pursue, if for no other reason, a great number of our residents don't live in the urban area. And, you know, in my conversations with council and on a number of different issues, doing our best to ensure that both rural and urban residents enjoy the investments that we have made in public services is important to you. You've expressed that to me on a number of occasions, and I hear you. And I think that an on-demand system allows you to do that. It would allow someone in an urban area to take, you know, an on-demand system to medical appointments and back. It would allow people, you know, to go to after-school programs and back regardless of where you live. And it would probably, you know, if you go for the more expensive side of things, you're probably looking at about 15 minutes, 15-minute wait is probably what you're looking for. But, you know, the other thing I wanted to address is the presentation received from Napanee CAP. So by way of reminder, Napanee CAP was kind enough to give us a presentation where, in essence, they would be offering a subsidized rate for seniors and people on low income. They would have a limited number of guaranteed rides per week. You know, it would take the average cost per ride from $12 to $6 with a variety of subsidies. You know, a little bit provided by the cap company, larger subsidies provided by community organizations and/or the town, and I understand recently it would be more of community organizations. The, you know, the investment for that would be about $30,000. So I would suggest that the idea in principle, I'm hugely supportive of. I don't know that I support us getting into partnership with that. I, I don't know that I support us getting into partnership with that, only because it's a social services related program, and, and we're not in the social services business. We are in the culture business, we're in the recreation business, we're in, you know, the, the snowplow business, like we're in a number, we have a number of lines of business. And I'm just conscious of scope creep in any organization, and I think this represents that. That being said, I would recommend that as an organization, we write a letter of support for this idea. I think it's a good idea. I understand there's a ton of work that's gone into this. I believe that the effort has, has advanced since it came to our table and, and we heard about it to where there's some community support for it. I believe, and I'll ask Madam Clerk to weigh in if, if she has anything to add, but I believe that they've indicated a letter of support is, is what they're looking for from us at this point in time, if you wanted to add to that.
Yes, through your worship, just after this report was published, we did receive verbal confirmation from Napanee Cap that they have been moving forward with the nonprofit incorporation proposal for this and are seeking government and corporate sponsorships for this, and that a letter of support would be beneficial for the grant-seeking efforts that they are doing.
So there's the latest out of the press. And, and, you know, in, in the recommendations that you'll, you'll see from me, I absolutely think we should provide that. I do. I, I think it's, it's an added service, I mean, it's a social service, but it is, I think, an added benefit, and I think that, you know, moral support, if you will, from the local municipality tends to go a long way for these sorts of things. In, in general, like what you'll see from my recommendations, in addition to receiving this report, is, is I think that, you know, we need to confirm that this is not something that we can do on our own at this point in time. I, I just don't think it is, just because of the sheer cost of it. That being said, I think that if the time comes, or the circumstances come through partnership or government investment or other things like that, that, you know, a microtransit solution would be the solution for us, I believe. I, I would suggest that we start to gauge interest in, you know, a more regional partnership with municipalities between Belleville and Kingston. I know there are other municipalities within that range that have been looking at this particular option. And, you know, when I take a look at the provincial government's investment strategy on transit, they're investing in regional transit, that's what they're doing. That's what Metrolinks is, that's what, that's what the general investment transit, in transit philosophy has been by the, by the provincial government. So I think we would have a better opportunity, one, to lower, even without investment, more partners would bring down total cost, and it would increase the range of transit, and it might be able to get you from major center to major center, from a, from a Belleville to a Kingston and everything in between. And it would also put us in line, I would suggest, in better position to apply for government funding as a regional, as a regional body. And again, I would say that we provide a letter of support for Napanee Taxi for their efforts, which would be independent of any efforts that we might undertake. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Is there any questions or comments for Mr. Grant with respect to his report or the presentation before us? Seeing none, we do have a staff recommendation that council received for information, the executive services transit options for Greater Napanee report, that council confirmed that financially, the town is not currently in a position to fund its own transit system. That council confirmed that if and when the town decides to pursue a transit service in Greater Napanee, that it will pursue an on-demand service to provide maximum flexibility and best ability to manage cost. The council directs staff to reach out to smaller municipalities between Kingston and Belleville to gauge interest in pursuing and jointly funding a regional on-demand transit service where costs can be shared. The council offer Napanee Taxi a letter of support for their low-income transit initiative, and that council directs staff to remove resolutions one-twenty-one slash twenty-five and one-sixty-two slash twenty-five from the resolution tractor, tracker. Moved by Deputy Mayor Cowper, seconded by Counselor Martin. Is there any further comments, questions, or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, the motion's carried. Executive Services Livestock EValuator Appointments, and Madam Clerk, I know you're going to speak to that one.
So through your worship, as indicated in the report, we did receive a high volume of interest in the call for applications for livestock evaluators. Given that this is a shift for us at this point, staff recommendation is to appoint everyone who met the minimum qualifications of being a Greater Napanee resident and having recent or current farming experience. While it's not specifically noted in the report, staff's intention would also be that this bylaw becomes something that is reviewed annually, so that if there are tweaks needed, either to increase or decrease, or otherwise adjust the number of appointed evaluators or how the program works, that we're, we're keeping up with that regularly. If there's any questions, happy to take those.
Okay, thanks, Jessica. Is there any questions or comments? Go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
Thank you. And through your worship, Jessica, you may have answered this at a previous meeting, and I don't remember, but are these individuals, when they apply for this and are accepted for the role and do the training, they are considered to be self-employed?
Yes, through your worship, these are considered contractors, not town employees, for the purposes of this appointment.
So when you cut the check, it's for a hundred bucks, and it's up to them to claim it, claim it, there's no deductions, it's just a straight fee for service, done, you're on your own. Okay, thank you.
Through your worship, a hundred dollars plus mileage. But yes, no deductions.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Counselor Hicks. Is there anything further? Seeing none, we do have a recommendation that council received for information, the executive services livestock evaluated appointments report, and for other council considered by law to appoint livestock evaluators later this, at this meeting. Moved by Deputy Mayor Cowper, seconded by Counselor Martin. If any further common questions or concerns, go ahead, Counselor Schenk.
Jessica, are you gonna buy eight cameras for all these people?
Through your worship, no, they are required to have their own equipment.
Thanks, Counselor Schenk. Is there anything else? Seeing none, we do have a motion on the floor, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, motion's carried. Arts and Advisory Committee Recommendation Playing O Canada at Council Meetings, and Madam Clerk, you're gonna speak to this as well.
Through your worship, since this is procedure by law adjacent, I, I will be speaking to this. There was a recommendation from the Arts Committee that council consider using the Playing O Canada to feature local artists. While the recommendation is possibly that that be considered for all meetings, staff do believe that it could be feasibly and affordably done at a moderately decent audio quality, certainly nothing professional musician quality, but that just the logistics involved might be a bit much for doing it at every meeting, but certainly it is, this is fully council's discretion how they would want to do that. The scenario envisioned by IT is that we would get a couple microphones with stands, they would be brought in sort of in this space here, temporarily unplug these mugs, mics, put the cords into those mics, do the performance, and then switch it all back, and then start the meeting as normal. Should be able to be done relatively affordably and with relatively decent sound quality.
Thanks, Madam Clerk, Counselor Schenk, and then I'll go to Counselor Norrie.
Anytime you can have youth and kids or for school or whatever, the arts presented this, I, I'm fully in support of, you know, hey, I think that's something that we, we used to do as children and years ago, and I think it's a fantastic idea.
Thanks, Counselor Schenk. Counselor Norrie.
Thank you. Yes, this came up at our last meeting, as I brought up, and no mean was it meant for every meeting. It's just an idea to maybe get kids involved, and I was thinking, after seeing some of technical stuff, school's almost done, let staff, you come up with the ideas, come up with a, a plan by, by the fall, and then we can figure how we're gonna advertise it to the schools, but there's no rush, and it wasn't meant to be every meeting, but something special for the kids.
Yeah, great, thanks.
The fall's good.
Thanks, Counselor Norrie, that, that was going to be, I was just gonna make that suggestion, that I, I think it's a great idea, and I'm not so certain we can do it at every meeting, but I think we can most definitely make it work for some special occasions or sporadically through the year. And as far as the equipment goes, I know that the, the equipment can be dual purposed, because I know a lot of times we do have presentations, and it's a little bit awkward when we haven't got the right equipment to do that, so, and I thank Madam Clerk for, for bringing that to my attention, that the equipment will be used, I'm sure, for presentations and for singing of O Canada, so we're gonna get our money out of the equipment as well, so. Is there anything else? So I'm sensing that Counselor Norrie, that you want to make a motion with respect to note and receive the, the report with respect to singing of O Canada at the council meetings, and for the council invite local artists to perform O Canada at the beginning of special occasion council meetings, and delegate the Arts and Advisory Committee to invite and schedule artists for that purpose? Would that be, or did you wish to tweak it on your own?
No, that's fine, that covers it, and that gives us a couple meetings over the summer as well to, because they had some ideas, but we just had to get the ball rolling, so thank you. I saw move.
Thank you, Counselor Norrie. Do we have a second or? Counselor Schenk. Is there any further questions, comments, or concerns with respect to the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, motion's carried. Bylaws, we'll start with bylaw number twenty-two-five-zero-zero-four-one, to delegate authority to treasurer to execute extension of agreements. So look for a motion to put it on the floor, moved by Counselor Schenk, seconded by Counselor Hicks. Ready, first, second, and finally passed, the twenty-seventh day of May, twenty-twenty-five. All in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, motion's carried. Bylaw number twenty-two-five-zero-zero-four-two, to amend municipal grants, policy bylaw number twenty-two-three-dash-zero-zero-sixty-eight, look for a motion to put it on the floor, moved by Deputy Mayor Cowper, seconded by Counselor Martin. Ready, first, second, and finally passed, this twenty-seventh day of May, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-five. All in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, motion's carried. Bylaw number twenty-two-five-zero-zero-four-three, to amend procurement bylaw twenty-two-one-zero-zero-four-one. Look for a motion to put it on the floor, moved by Deputy Mayor Cowper, seconded by Counselor Hicks. Ready, first, second, and finally passed, this twenty-seventh day of May, twenty-twenty-five. All in favor of the motion that's on the floor, opposed, motion's carried. Bylaw number twenty-two-five-zero-zero-four-four, to appoint livestock evaluators. Look for a motion to put it on the floor, moved by Counsel, Deputy Mayor Cowper, seconded by Counselor Norrie. Ready, first, second, and finally passed, the twenty-seventh day of May, twenty-twenty-five. All in favor of the motion, opposed, motion's carried. Information reports from members, is there any information reports from members that they'd like to share with us this evening? Seeing none, are there any inquiries from council that we can task staff with, they come back with a later date, Counselor Schenk?
Got two items. First one is, is that I mentioned this last year, the year before that, is there any way we could have, if you have, hopefully, we have at a council meeting that's not a heavy council meeting, that we have one in the south and one in the north? All I'm saying is once during the year, like, you know what I mean, like, just one in the south. I know the county, I read somewhere, or somebody told me that you were having one over in Amherst Island, but all I'm saying is, is people in Roblin or whatever, you know what I mean, or somebody, or in South Fred, you know, it's just brings the community together, and a lot of people are busy in their lives, and I think it would go over well. We used to do it in all this town years ago, Angela, and we once in the north and once in the south, you know what I mean? But that was my first thing, whether that could be done.
Okay. I think staff have duly noted, and I'm sure that they will come back with the logistics as to how we can make that happen. Mr. Grant?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, we can certainly look into that and, and circle back to council on what the options are.
And my second thing is, is that the Quinney Detention Center, Detention Center, when they're doing the reconstruction, they're gonna be taking down the perimeter fence, all right? And there's not gonna be any fence there, all right? It's a jail. You know what I mean? I've had numerous individuals phone me and say, you know, is this true, or is this? And I said, well, from my understanding, it is. So I just want to hear if council has any preference, or, you know, there's site plan, but I mean, sure, it's, you know, provincial jurisdiction, but it's still in our municipality, they're still expanding it, and you're not gonna pay somebody to go ahead and really go to the wall without any type of perimeter fence, and they chuck something over, it just the security that's is, you know, i- if it's a jail, it's a jail, you know what I mean? I, I'm sorry if I offend somebody because they're in a jail and it doesn't look like a jail, like, to, have a nice day. So all I'm saying is, is that my preference is that their fence be put, or at least the fence is there to keep the public away from, just for security reasons. I know I'm not in that field, but if I lived in town, I, I, I believe it should be there, but that's my own opinion, and I, if anybody wants to discuss on that, or whatever, have their view, and they could let staff know and see what they can do, and talk to Mike, and Mike's gonna be getting a letter anyway, or had received a letter, but you know what the government's like.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Nobes, I think in the foreseeable future, you could probably bring a report back with respect to what the requests or the asks of the jail are. I, I know Mike, with all these new jails that they're building, they're not putting perimeter fences around parking lots of them, the one that they got up in just west of Toronto, Maple, Maple, Maplehurst, when you, when you take a look at it from the Google, and it's right on the four oh one, you can drive right into the parking lot of, of that facility, so I'm not sure where, where things went sideways, but the old days of having a, a fence around the whole building is, is, or the whole property is, is, seemed to have gone the way of the dodo bird, but I'm sure that, I'm sure that Michael can probably expand on it.
Through your worship, just prior to this meeting, I received correspondence back from, from StanTech and the ministry related to these concerns that were brought up, so I'll just invite council to, to take a look at those responses after the meeting, and if there's any further questions, comments, concerns, certainly reach out to me, and I can, I can get back to Stan. We can do a little bit more back and forth if need be on, on the matter of fencing.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
I'd just like to know, I'll have further discussion is, if we have, do we have any say for site plan? That, I mean, I don't care what they do in Toronto, all I care is what they do in Greater Napanee, all right? And I'm sorry, I'm not that sensitive. If you're in jail, I'm sorry, that's, you did something wrong, if you pay, you gotta pay, you know? But I mean, I, I, all I'm saying is, is if we have any control or any say over it, if we have no control and no say, well, then I'm just beating a, you know, something dead here, but.
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
Through your worship, we, we have some level of say, in the sense that we can make requests in this, in this sense, but there, this specific item is not listed as an element that the municipality can require through site plan, so there's certain items that we can require be reviewed and approved by the municipality through site plan. Security measures, broadly speaking, are, is not listed in the Act, Planning Act, as an item that we can require specific documentation for, or have our own specific set of guidelines and standards for this sort of installation. We can always make a request, but I would say if we're gonna go to the wall on it, we would likely not succeed in the sense that that item is not listed as something that the municipality can have jurisdiction over, per se, other than, you know, in the sense of minimum parking requirements, you know, improvements to municipal road allowances and rights of way, that, that, those sorts of things that are listed in the Planning Act that we can dictate through site plan control, security fencing is not, is not an identified item.
Go ahead, Mr. Grant.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, I think the other thing, and unless we've already done this, we can certainly reach out to Ontario Corrections and, and ask for information about sort of safety and security measures in place with the removal and, and of the fence and no replacement of the fence, just so we could pass on information if we get that.
Through your worship, that, that is what was just sent out to council just prior to this meeting, so I, you likely just haven't had the chance to review it, so following the meeting, everybody can take a look at that and, and. Following the meeting, everybody can take a look at that and, and then reach back out to me if there's any further comments or questions.
Okay, and we can always, we can always revisit it, I think, at the next meeting. I just haven't had a chance to read it myself, Mike, so. Yeah, so go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
Thank you, your worship. I'm picturing in my mind the, the layout of the new, like, the proposed changes to the, the Quinney Detention Center. And the prisoner yard, recreation yard, for lack of a better term, is on the north side of the building facing the four oh one, correct? And it's, if I remember the drawings correctly, it's walled. It's not fenced. It is walled. So it's three sides, the actual, sorry, three sides, the actual building, one side just, just cinder block or whatever, facing the four oh one. And there's nowhere else that a prisoner inmate resident, whatever the term is these days, is outside of the building. Is that the logic behind removing all of the chain link fence and, and wire?
Through your worship, yes. Ultimately, what you'll find in that response from the ministry is, is to that effect. So any, any outdoor area where inmates could be having outdoor time is at the very north side of the addition, ultimately, of the addition specifically. And on the existing facility, it's, I believe, contained more to the interior of the existing facility, so not right up against the exterior wall. It's more contained inside. But yeah, for the addition, it's three walls and a fence, a very small outdoor space on the addition.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Counselor Hicks. And, and that's what I would suggest, Mike, is we have a look at what the correspondence that came back from the province. And then probably at our next meeting, we'll have the ability to decide whether or not we wanna send a letter to the Attorney General or try and get some clarification. I just, I just haven't had a chance to read it. I didn't know it existed, so.
I always believe that everybody should stay in their lane. I'm a farmer, but when I have a lot of correctional officers that I know say, this is nuts, and this is the reason why. So I go from what they do, and it is today's society. I've made my voice, and if we have very little bit of control of what we can do, then so be it. I just find it, it's, it's just an accident waiting to happen. You're, you're such, such close proximity to a high movement of traffic, all right? And in a corner section of where it is, and with the expansion and everything else, I can go ahead and pay somebody, go here, here's twenty bucks. Go walk over there and throw something over the thing or whatever. Yeah, you, you know what I mean? Oh, there's, there's, there's a correctional officer's vehicle, you know what I mean? He said something bad to something. Now I gotta go ahead and do something to it. There's no security at all. So I totally agree with what they're saying. So, you know, I'm just a counselor from Ward One in the town of Greater Napanee, and that's what I care about, so. You know, the town of Greater Napanee, and if any way we could correct that, well, I'll read through the information, see if there's another angle. All right, thanks.
Yeah, and, and I will as well, Mike, so. Go ahead, Counselor Hicks.
I did miss my opportunity, I think, but I'd like to do a shout-out to Parks Maintenance. I was recently in Richmond, which is a suburb of the city of Ottawa, and you guys here in Napanee are rocking it. I walked by a park where it was just disgraceful, and all of the grass clippings had been blown onto not just the road, but the sidewalk, which with rain, as anyone will tell you, especially on social media, is dangerous. So shout-out to, to the Parks crew. You're doing a great job. Keep it up.
Thanks, Counselor Hicks. And you didn't miss your opportunity. You were just a little bit preemptive, so. But, 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 no, you, you were knees-deep into it, and I didn't wanna stop you, so. Is there anything else with respect to the inquiries? Seeing none. Is there any notices, motions? I don't believe, we were aware of any anyways. New business? I don't believe there's any new business, unless somebody knows something that I don't. And announcements? Is there any announcements anyone would like to make following up on Counselor X?
Okay, it's getting late.
Seeing none, CAO's remarks. Mr. Grant, is there anything you would like to add to this evening's meeting?
Nothing from me this evening, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. The forward calendar, I know that we've all had an opportunity to see the forward calendar as well as the council resolution tracker. Is there anything in those two documents anyone would like to speak to, ask any questions of, or make any inquiries? Seeing none, look for a motion to confirm the proceedings of the Council of the Corporation of Town of Greater Napanee. Moved by Counselor, their Deputy Mayor Calver, seconded by Counselor Martin. Ready, first, second, and finally passed, this twenty-seventh day of May, twenty-twenty-five. All in favor of the motion? Opposed, motion's carried. Look for a motion for adjournment, moved by Counselor Hicks, seconded by Counselor Shank. If there's no further comments, questions, or concerns, all in favor of that motion, opposed, motion's carried. Thanks, folks. Again, it's another very productive and long night, but we got through a lot of work, so we'll see you in a couple of weeks.